Good afternoon and welcome. This is the October 16th, 2023 work session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of emergency, we ask everyone to remain calm and exit through the double doors to the parking lot located in the front corner of this building, pointing right over there. And if that door is blocked for any reason, please exit through the door to my right by pulling the fire alarm that's located right to the right of the door and under the monitor. Please let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask you to silence all your cell phones. Public comments on any of the topics presented this evening will be heard at the end of the agenda. Please complete a form provided at the table by the double doors when you came in and give it to the city clerk, Ms. Julie English, and you will be called in the receipt of those in the order that you put them in. Okay. So first on our agenda tonight, we have our water sewer extension policy. Amanda Pollak, Water Resources Engineer at the center of the Washed Protection and City Attorney Laura Ryan. Would you like to come forward and give us your presentation?
Good afternoon, everyone. Hi, everyone.
Thank you.
Here is a follow-up from a presentation that we did in September. And this is to talk about the potential water and sewer extension policy that applies to properties that have public health concerns. So this doesn't change anything to do with normal annexation for projects that want to develop. This is defining a policy that clarifies what will be done in the event of properties that have failing septic systems or contaminated drinking water. And essentially, this policy lays out procedures that in some cases have already been done now. And it really clarifies the code and provides specificity on what needs to get done in this instance and who's responsible for the project and who's responsible for payment. In your packet also now is a resolution, if you choose to move this forward, a resolution to adopt this as a policy. But essentially, this prioritizes the health issues and serving properties with water and sewer over annexation. So annexation would not be done initially in most cases. So we went through it in a lot of detail last time, so we thought it was best to turn it over and see if there was any questions this time or anything we can clarify.
Do we have any questions? We have Michelle Gregory and April Jackson and Deshaun on Zoom today. Any questions?
No.
None, for me.
No questions, just a comment that, you know, the steps that we needed. We talked about this being a public health emergency right now. So adding these clarification steps for the city is really important.
Do we have a consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
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 Thank you. We will move this forward. Thank you. Easy peasy. Thank you, though. Nicely put together. Yes, Ms. Ryan, you're there again. We're going to be doing... Ms. Ryan's going to provide us an overview of zoning as it pertains to the halfway homes, group homes, and recovery homes. Ms. Ryan?
Thank you. So as you said, I've been asked to talk about just kind of the overall zoning regulations that concern these kinds of facilities. And when we look at them, we really look at different layers of both the city code as well as state law. So if you look at the city code, there are definitions of two different kinds of facilities built into our zoning code already, and they've been there for a long time. And that's our group home definition and our group domiciliary care facility definition. A group home provides housing for rehabilitation services, but they're typically associated with some kind of delinquency or current addiction, and it allows up to 10 people. A group domiciliary care facility provides housing for elderly or people who are categorized as handicapped under the Fair Housing Act. And likewise, they also provide for up to 10 people in those homes. And so those definitions are already built into the code, and we have in there different zoning districts where they are allowed. So for a group home, I counted, there's at least three zoning districts where you could have them by a special exception. For the group domiciliary care facility, it's a permitted use in actually at least nine of our districts. And it can be also in at least one other district by special exception. So if you have one of those two facilities and it falls under those categories, you can have them as a permitted use in nine districts. And then, and that's just depending on which kind of what it is. That's for the domiciliary care facility, which I think is probably the more likely of the two. And then in the other one, you can have it as a special exception in three other districts. So that's what our code provides. We then look at the next layer, which is what the state law provides. And the state law divides these facilities into three different kinds. Their definitions are a little bit different. They categorize them as halfway houses, group homes, which that definition is different than ours, and then a recovery residence. The state law then builds into its code kind of zoning exemptions. So if you look at a halfway house, which is usually like a clinically managed, low-intensity residential treatment, you can either have a small one or a large one. A small one is between four to eight people, and a large one is between nine and 16 individuals. And so what the state law says is that for a small halfway house, that's a residential use, and it can be in any residential district. For a large halfway house, it's a multifamily use, and it can be in a multifamily district. The thing to keep in mind is that you have to be licensed as a halfway house, and there's, you know, a long list of requirements that the state makes you do in order to receive that license. It's similar for a group home, which is kind of like a lesser degree of treatment, also in a home-like environment. They have to be certified again, and there's a list of requirements. But assuming someone has a group home, there's also zoning exemption. So for a small one, it's between four and nine individuals, and a large one is between 10 and 16 individuals. And the state, again, breaks that up into... A small one is considered a residential use, and a large one's considered a multifamily use. So if someone had a license to operate one of those homes in one of those districts, that's the law that applies. It's that state law. The third kind of home that I mentioned is a recovery residence. Those provide alcohol and drug-free housing, but they don't provide any kind of clinical treatment. And the state does not have similar zoning exemptions for them. So in that situation, what we would do is we would resort to our city code and to see if the facility falls within one of those two definitions that I talked about earlier. If it does, we would then look to those zones to see if it's a permitted use or if it's a use that can be done with a special exception. If it doesn't, if it doesn't fall in with any of those definitions and the person running it needed to have it or wanted to have it in a district that it wasn't allowed, their option would be to ask for an accommodation under the ADA. In that situation, it's a very fact-specific analysis, and the person who wants to have the facility has the burden of showing that it's reasonable and necessary in order to afford the people an equal opportunity to housing. So that's kind of the overview of the different layers and the different laws that apply to these and where they are permitted and, you know, what the state law says and what our code says.
Well, thank you for walking through this with us. I think, I'm speaking for myself, but I think the rest of the council might... If we could get a copy of the state code, I know we could easily look it up, but if it'd be possible for us to get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Just so we, I know I'm looking at exactly what you're referencing here.
Yeah. And like I said, it is a fact-specific analysis. You would really have to know what each particular property has been used on and what their licenses are in order to figure out, you know, which one of the definitions they fall under. But we could certainly do that.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments about this presentation?
I have a question.
Yes.
Yes, so I never looked at the state for definitions. Did we also look at any other similar municipalities of our size and character to see what their definitions and statutes are or if they had any code enforcements as it pertains to any of these three subsections?
So the three categories that I mentioned that are codified by the state, they will apply to every municipality regardless of what's in their zoning code. So they apply to the state on a universal basis. It's only the extra protections that are afforded by municipal codes. So for instance, our code identifies two other types of facilities that you can have that are allowed in various districts throughout the cities, throughout the city. I've not compared how those definitions near, you know, with another specific jurisdiction because the state ones would be the same throughout.
Anyone else?
Great, thank you.
Yes, I do because you're saying a halfway house is residential. It could be multifamily, multifamily, right?
Depending on the size. The state categorizes them as small and large, depending on how many occupants, but it has to be the, meet the definition of what the state says is a halfway house and what their requirements are.
Okay, and then you said a group home is anywhere from four to nine individuals or 10 to 16 individuals. Am I right?
Yes. Again, that's the same thing. It has to be the state definition of a group home and needs the state requirements.
So it has to be state definition. Okay. Now, now the actual recovery, alcohol and drug-free. You're saying that has to go, tell me about municipal code?
So for a recovery residence, it doesn't have similar exemptions as a halfway house or a group home. So halfway house and group home, they have, depending on if you meet those qualifications, they have zoning exemptions. A recovery residence doesn't have those built into the state code. The distinction between them is that the recovery residence is not a treatment facility. And that's a distinction that is made in those statutes.
Okay, so you're telling me a halfway house is a treatment center? And a group home is a treatment center?
Under the state code, yes. A halfway house provides like a, it's similar, what would be considered one of those 3-1 programs where they're providing a certain level of care.
So I have another question. Okay, recovery, because it's not a treatment center. Is it because it's something new? Because, or something new here? That it is not state-coded or state-initiated? Or you don't have any jurisdiction, the state doesn't have any jurisdiction over it? Is it because now that we have more of the recovery homes dealing with alcohol and drugs, or drug being drug-free? Could that be possibly a reason why it is not under state code?
I don't know. I would have to go back and see when the actual statute that deals with recovery residences was enacted. But the fact that it's in the state code shows that it's something that's been, you know, it's something that's considered by the state. Recovery residence is defined by the state. It's just that it doesn't have the same level of detail as the other two categories.
I have a question. What are the staffing requirements? Does the state have any kind of staffing requirements for recovery residents? Or is it just considered?
So for, to hold yourself out as a halfway house or a group home under the state statute, you have to go and get a license. And there's a whole bunch of stuff that you have to do in order to get that license. A recovery residence is defined a little bit different. You don't have to be certified by the state. You're not allowed to hold yourself out as being certified by the state unless you are. But unlike the other ones, it's not a requirement. My assumption, and I don't know the answer off the top of my head, is that if you're going to be certified by the state, they probably have some kind of oversight requirements, but I couldn't tell you what they are off the top of my head.
Okay. So we don't know what kind of, like, if there's a requirement for staffing ratios or anything when it comes to recovery residents?
I'd have to pull up, there's standards that the state looks at that the recovery homes have to meet if they're going to be certified. And I just don't know all of them off the top of my head. It's something we could certainly...
That's fine. Yeah, if you could find out and let us know, that would be great.
Sure.
So our municipal government could make our municipal code for recovery houses? Is that what you're saying?
So we can't give less than what the state is allowing. So we couldn't zone out a halfway house or a group home, nor have we tried to. But the state says these are specific categories. For recovery residences, there's not similar zoning regulations in the state. And so we could add that into the code, but it's likely something that's already there because we do have the group homes and the group domiciliary care facilities already built into our code.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would we need to identify recovery residents as a specific category? Like, just add that in? Or would the recovery residents be lumped into that? I just want to make sure that we're including them language-wise.
So I think our code does a pretty good job of giving two types of facilities that are providing this, you know, that I think would fall under a recovery residence. The problem is, is that municipal codes and the state codes, they call everything a little bit different. So our definition of group home is a little bit different than theirs. But if you read through the definitions of them, we already have, you know, two types of facilities that are permitted throughout Salisbury in various zoning districts.
Any other questions, comments about this? Okay. Well, Ms. Ryan, thank you for that presentation. It was well done. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Very informative. Okay. Next, we have an ordinance to approve a memorandum of understanding to receive funds from the Waukesha County Health Department in the amount of $10,000 for the fiscal year '24, State Station.
Well, you said it all. I guess I'm done.
Chief Chris Loparski.
Yes, this has been an ongoing partnership that we've had, our departments had with the Health Department. I think this is the third or fourth year we've done this. And basically, it's an agreement that we have with them. They pay us $10,000 cost for our time. And we go and we basically evaluate some of the patients that come in seeking help, just try to make sure that they don't need to go to the ER at that time or can they stay in their facility to start their treatment. They reimburse us over four times over the year, $2,500.
Any comments, questions?
No, I just, I'm happy we can provide the service to the community. So thank you, Chris.
Absolutely. I apologize, I meant to get some statistics for you today, and time just got away. But I will certainly...
Yeah, that was my...
Yeah, I will certainly...
Yeah, that was my question, Chris, if you could...
Yeah, I will certainly send that stuff to you guys so that we can see how well we've been doing over the last three to four years.
Phenomenal, thank you.
Yep.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Do we have consensus to move this forward to our legislative session?
Yes.
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 Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have annexation fees. Ms. Heather Conyer and the city administration, Andy Kitzrow.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So what you have before you tonight is a continuation of conversation that we started several months ago, arising from some complaints from local city stakeholders about the fact that our annexation fees, they felt, were high, much higher than those in similarly situated jurisdictions. So we did sit down and we had birched this topic with you before. We did an audit with the assistance of MML of what annexation fees in other jurisdictions were. I believe Ms. Outen asked us to put that survey as an exhibit, which we have drafted that up just to provide to you...
Thank you.
...comparison. So you can see that our current fee, which is $9,011 actually per acre, is high in comparison to similar jurisdictions. And so our proposal is that we reduce our annexation fees to $5,000 for up to one acre and then $500 for every additional acre after that. And you can see from the worksheet, the exhibit, that that is well within what other jurisdictions are doing.
Thank you again for providing that.
I don't know if Andy has any further comments?
Nope. She hit it on the head with, is there any questions I can answer? Sure, I'll try to do that.
No questions. I just appreciate having the survey. That's very, very helpful.
Ms. Jackson, any questions, comments?
Oh, no. I'm fine with it. Yes.
Anybody else, Sean, any questions? Okay. So we can go ahead and move this forward. Do I have a consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
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 Perfect. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we have the LDA Lot 16 and Lot 3 Special Counsel, Rena Patel, and City Administrator Andy Kitzrow, Procurement Director Jennifer Miller.
Rena, you're going to take the lead? Do you want me to introduce it?
I can introduce it, Andy.
Great.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
What you have in front of you this evening is the amended and restated LDA for lots 3 and Lot 16. We originally bid these parcels back in July of 2017. We got two proposals, one for Lot 16, the other for Lot 3, if I remember correctly, back in 2018. I did list the resolution numbers in your packet where city council approved the original land disposition agreements with both Davis Simpson Holdings LLC for Lot 16 and R. Miller Properties LLC for Lot Number 3. And then on March 23rd, 2020, city council approved a different resolution which contained the contract of sale of the Salisbury Green, or Lot 3, from R. Miller Properties to Davis Simpson Holdings. And then it consolidated those into one development parcel. So as we look to clean up the various land disposition contracts, get them freshened, set new development timelines, set delayed performance penalties, that's what you have in your packet this evening. You'll note that all of the exhibits are there, including a refreshed development narrative provided by the developer. So tonight is for questions from the council, and then we would look to move it to a legislative session for a vote.
Okay, Jennifer. You're in it now. What took it so long to get where it is today?
Sure. Andy, would you like...
From 2017 till now?
Yep. Andy, could you provide some comment?
Sure. Well, it's, this LDA is driven by the developer based off of some of our more recent incentives and where we are post-COVID. And just like some of the other developments you've seen come before this group, where the LDAs have been restated and moving forward, this developer is ready to move forward on this project too. So that's why we've restated it and presented this new document. So I think the timing is right based off of incentives that exist and conditions in the market.
Okay, so you're saying that it was so due to COVID?
I think, I think a lot of development...
And funding?
Funding. I think a lot of developments had stalled during a couple of years when we first introduced Horizon and then when here is Home Is. But I think we are, as you see, with some of the other developments that have come forward, developers in the downtown area are ready to move forward and start the timelines again with their projects. So I think this is one of those scenarios where the developer is ready to have a restated LDA with new timelines, new expectations, and then start moving that project forward.
So if this project does get passed to go into the legislative part of the council, what's the date and deadline on having this contract?
Sure. 18, it would, it would be 18 months from the time of executing this contract to the issuance of a building permit.
18 months?
Correct.
Getting, receiving the building permit?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I don't know anything about receiving building permits. Rappi, how long does it take to receive a building permit? I'm being honest, I don't know.
Sure. So in just in the development world, Councilman Dottie knows this too, there's the design phase, there's the building permit, which starts the construction phase. And then depending on how big your building, that can be anywhere from 12 months to 24 months. So that's a secondary phase would be building permit. So what would happen is this LDA starts the plot for them to be able to settle on the property and retain ownership. It then allows them to move forward with design. Once you have design, then you can start...
So it's 12 months, 24 months? And what, 12 to 24 months?
Yeah, I think, I think the first milestone in this document is 12 months for design documents and then fully building permits, 18 months. So then that would start the construction timeline. And depending on the length of construction would be then, you know, we're looking probably two and a half to three years when we'd have people starting to occupy that space. But Councilman Dottie, feel free to jump in.
Man, you explained it pretty well. The only question I have is the renderings that were included in the packet, is that the most updated renderings that Davis Strategic has for us?
I had just received these prior to putting the council packet together. So to my knowledge, yes.
Great.
Any other comments or questions?
I just appreciate you adding on that additional packet since this is a project that's coming on well before Deshaun and I step on the council. It's nice to get that refreshed.
Do I have a consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
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 Okay, it's all yeses. We're moving this forward. Excellent, and thank you. The package was nicely done.
Thank you.
Very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next, we're going to be, we're going to be talking, we're going to be talking about North Prom update and budget amendment. Procurement Director Jennifer Miller, Department of Infrastructure and Development, Director Mr. Baldwin, and our city administrator, Andy Kitzrow. All right. Is it like a one-on-one? All right, so our North Proms up... We're talking about our North Prom update now.
Sure. So I am going to just introduce it as a follow-up to the conversation we've had with council previously. I'm also going to share my screen. We have a couple of slides we'd like to do as the overview. I believe Rick Baldwin will be walking us through the overview. And then at the end of our conversation, we'll talk specifically about the acquisition of a couple of properties, which then will bring in Jennifer Miller into that conversation. So I am sharing my screen now.
Andy, thank you. And Ms. Jackson, it's a pleasure to finally have the opportunity to cover this and at least... Andy, thank you. And Ms. Jackson, it's a pleasure to finally have the opportunity to cover this in at least a little more detail. Andy, if you could just go to the next slide. So right now, that's the footprint of
My bad.
That's the footprint of what we're looking at for North Prong Park. You know, I was commenting earlier today with the administrator, the first time I heard of this was with the Greater Salisbury Committee, excuse me, about 25 years ago. So it's exciting to see this continuing forward. The next, just leave it on this slide, but the next two slides will show a little more detail. The properties that are shown in blue, beginning at the top with the Rose Street Boat Ramp. Then there's some private properties that come all the way to the waterfront, a long stretch from Johnson's Pond Dam, almost all the way down to Isabella. Those properties are already owned by the city. When we get to the south side of Isabella, you see that long blue one that looks almost like a bent knee. That's our utilities property. Of course, owned by the city today. The two blue ones to the south of that are 317 and 325 Lake Street, also known as Salcap, if you've heard it by that reference. And then two more properties to the south. The various colors show the ownership of properties so that you can see what is owned. And if you go to the next slide, we're just going to deal with each of the two halves. That's just the northern half from Rose Street down to Isabella. So you see the Boat Ramp property, which is the city. The next two, where they're yellow, going all the way to the waterfront, and we've added a hash mark across the back end of that. The purpose of that hash mark is, our intention there is not to seek acquisition of the property, but an easement to be able to just have the park and make whatever planned improvements or whatnot would be in there. Right now, well, we'll get to the concept towards the end. So then you have a long strip of property that gives us access to that side of Johnson's Dam and is used by field operations. You see the small wedge. That is an easement from DPNL. Our expectation is to be able to turn that green and with continued cooperation with DPNL. Another parking lot area in blue, used by field ops. You can see the vehicles parked underneath the translucent. Then the next parcel to the south is the railroad. That actually, their property cuts through field operations, then across this piece, and then you would see the trestle when you're on Isabella Street. We do own the small blue property to the south of the railroad. The next three, right facing both the river as well as Isabella, are owned by DNI, all three. Two of them currently have houses on them. The one in green is unimproved and unoccupied. That's certainly a target and a priority for us, an interest in obtaining that because it would extend our waterfront acquisition. And Andy, if you go to the next slide, jump to the south side of Isabella. Once again, you see the utilities building. You see the Drexel or Chicken Man property in green. The next two green properties, those in green are all high priority. The one furthest to the south is Purdue Agribusiness, which has been put in motion and will continue to pursue that that would be gifted to the city. Then we come to Salcap. And underneath the translucent image, you can see the structures and improvements that were there previously. We have had a state grant to be able to do the demolition of those improvements on the property. Because of contamination in the soil, contamination below grade, the demolition stopped where we would have to go below grade. We have been successful. Amanda Rodriguez and our department prepared a grant to the U.S. EPA. First one that's been obtained by the State of Maryland in quite some time for $1.98 million to deal with the contamination that is on that site. We look to move forward with that in calendar year 25. It may spill over into, oh, excuse me. We look to move forward in calendar year 24. It may spill over into 25 to get complete. But at the end of that work, the anticipation would be that all of those concrete structures, all the buildings, all of the foundations would be removed. We will remove two feet of soil down, replace that back with clean soil, and at least at that point in time, have a nice green space for the first time along what has historically been an industrial waterfront. The two properties to the south of that that are shown in purple, 313 and 315 Lake Street. The city is currently in pursuit of acquisition of those properties. We will need to complete an environmental assessment, an EA1. If there are no findings from that, that would bring us to bona fide protective purchaser status. If there are any findings, we'll need additional time to do a Level 2 environmental assessment. But that bona fide purchaser status protects us from the state coming in and saying we must proceed with any cleanup that's present. Doesn't mean that we wouldn't have to remediate it. But unlike Lot 5, which right now we have to move forward, they would not be able to dictate a timeline. And to back up, we did achieve that status with 317 and 325 Lake Street before we took possession of that from the Salcaps. So that's a list of the properties, where we are so far. And Andy, if you just go to the last slide. This is one concept of seven designs received from various students. In 2018, our department held a design project with students, received seven entries, a lot of great ideas. This one seemed to be, give the best presentation of what we are considering. But I would caution you that that is showing green space on both the west side and the east side of the North Prong. And as you can see from where we are with property acquisition, that presently we're focusing on the west side. The intention is largely green space because we are dealing with former industrial sites. We have done a Level 1 environmental assessment of the city's utility site. That was previously occupied by SHA. The thought is that going back into that history, there was some contamination. We are waiting for the Level 2 assessment to be completed there. But since we are already an owner, that will not give us the protected status. Then we'll seek for the other properties. That's what we've been waiting to show you. We've been working on this for some years. Acquisition is a significant part of getting this done. Cleanup would be the next.
So as Jennifer jumps in, or April, let you, go ahead.
I do have a question, Andy. How long, and I know it'll take a while, for the completion of this project?
Sure.
Just everything.
So of the green on the west side of the North Prong going up onto Johnson's Pond, depending on how quickly we are able to acquire properties and depending on what remediations are needed, will dictate some of that. And then also funding will dictate some of that. So it could be, again, 18 months between now and when we'll start to see green space on that Salcap property. And then depending on acquisition of the additional properties and the timelines for funding and our ability to remediate the site if we come into contamination, two to five years to start. And then, but this could be, this is a generational project to have it to where we want it to be. It could be 10 to 20 years, depending if we're primarily going after grant funding or if we are funding this through city. Again, as Rick had mentioned, for the first time ever in a long time, we received the $2 million for that site cleanup on Salcap. But we've been sitting on that property for years, waiting for us to be able to have a competitive grant application to receive that money. So a little bit of this is dictated by how quickly we are able to acquire funding or put funding into it. So I think green spaces is probable. Some green spaces as quickly as two years from now and then go on from there.
Okay, now I have one more question before Jennifer comes on. There's a place on the north end, on Rose Street, that a house is on. Kind of like fenced in, but it's going down like a slope almost to me. What would we do with that home? It's right by the Boat Ramp.
Yes. So Ms. Jackson, I think, are you referring to the two that are shown in yellow near the top of the screen now?
No.
Further north.
It's a little further north. It's in its own part of the water. It's just by the water.
I think that's north of where we're looking at potentially. Do you know if it's north of Rose Street, April?
Yeah. It's on Rose Street. It's north. It's the very last out.
On the left.
On your left-hand side.
Right now, we're showing that outside of what we're looking at?
Right now. Okay. So if any work is done, then will it hinder the residents that are there at this present time, you know, at the time that this is done? Will it cause any repercussions? Damage to their home?
No.
I'm asking because I need to know because I'm going to ask you, tell you why. Because that's what they're going to ask me. My constituents are going to truly ask me. The residents of that community are truly going to ask me. Is it safe? What they're doing. I have no problem with what you're doing. I just want to be able to answer questions when I'm asked.
Sure. April, so, you know, from a connectivity standpoint, if you're looking at the items in yellow on the screen, when we talk about obtaining an easement, that may be so that we have a walking path that connects, you know, Isabella all the way north to the Boat Ramp. So something that's low impact, something that makes sense. There could be some cleanup along the riverfront, if that is something we choose, desire to do so that we have a little bit more water access, depending if we're north or south of that dam area. But if we're trying to create continuity from Rose Street all the way down below Isabella, I think it's probably going to be through walking paths or connectivity, almost like a waterfront walking via just create connectivity. So low impact. Rick, is that right?
Yes. And Ms. Jackson, you may recall that we do have a Level 1 issue with Johnson's Pond Dam. In previous CIP, some funding is in place to do those repairs.
Yes, I do remember.
When we go in and do that, MDE is also requiring that we clean up a lot of vegetation that's immediately around the dam. So with that, and this is only my opinion, but we'll begin to just do cleanup, make improvements, make access through there more pleasant. And then we're looking to move forward with the service center as we do. That would move parking over there and free up that parking space that you see right there, Andy circling, you know, to begin to green that area with low impact, should be low expense, and begin to make that pleasant area that's accessible to the community. I think Andy's estimate of two to five years sounds very reasonable.
Two to five years?
Yeah, and again, that just comes down to grant cycles and funding and how fast we want to push on this, knowing that there's opportunities and multiple pots of money to consider funding for this project depending on what the outcome of each site actually is. So some of this is brownfield remediation, some of it is just maybe community parks and playgrounds or program open space, land and water conservation funds, some different state funding or maybe direct funding or allocations if we want to go that direction.
Well, I'm just glad to see that it's going to happen.
So the next part with Jennifer would be is this purple, these two purple parcels, and that is what's on the agenda for consideration this evening. So I'm going to stop sharing screen, but just so everybody knows, the two parcels just south of Salcap, which we are
Andy?
Go ahead, Deshawn.
Question, before you stop sharing, could you go back to the either next or previous slide that shows, yes? So just because it's there and I see it, and it's backing up that blue area to the left, those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 homes. I know four of those right next to, yes. Has any research been done? Those homes have been boarded and blighted for over five to 10 years. Has any research been done there to see if we have any potential in those homes?
Are those the homes on Lex Street?
Yes.
No, two of those homes, one
Habitat?
Those are not Habitat homes. If that's where I'm saying Lex Street, the addresses for those houses should be like 608, 606? No, 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 no. There's 607 and 605. Those houses are owned by Housing Authority. Those are
You're right. You're right.
Owned by Housing Authority. And I think two or three of those houses are, if I'm not mistaken, have been refurbished and people are in them. And that back lot of them, they have, it's a lot of land back there, but it's not feasible to those persons to do too much of anything with it. So when that land, it drops down. I can remember from a little girl, it drops down. So it's not much those people could do with it other than having it restored into a trail, you know, for the community.
Gotcha. And Andy, my next question was very quick. Have we, so you mentioned earlier about sort of stages or or sort of, you know, doing this in different packages. And would it be good for us to identify different stages with this project to kind of make it kind of cleaner and just kind of break it up in our minds?
Sure. There's a way we can look at North Prong now that we've presented it this way, kind of what we call phases. Things could have outcomes to it. We do that with the rail trail, whether it is, you know, here's acquisition, here's redevelopment, here's mitigation, or if it's just chunks along the path on how we want to do that and then create milestones and some financial budget approximations essentially so that you could see that in a CIP. So as we go through budgeting, you'll know like, okay, this is what we're going to try to tackle this upcoming year, couple of years, so we stay on point.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Andy, just seconding Deshawn's statement there. I think especially, budgeting aside and conversations for the the capital improvement plan, but when we look to communicate this with the community, it'd be nice to have this packaged in a way that we could really eloquently walk through the whole process, short and long term for residents. So that'd be great.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
No, ma'am.
So talking about the purple parcels, we will go to Jennifer Miller.
Yeah. I have the easy part. So what you have in front of you is a budget amendment for $67,123. That will allow us, along with the project open space grant from Maryland Department of Natural Resources for the $228,700, will allow us to purchase those two parcels that were in purple at the bottom, the 313 and 315 Lake Street. It will allow us to complete that purchase, plus do the environmental assessments for those parcels.
I'll go for it.
That was my question. Thank you for saying that. I was going to ask about the environmental assessment. So thank you for that.
So do we have consensus to move this forward? Yes, it sounds like it. Thank you both. Sounds like it. Perfect. Nicely, nice presentation. Thank you very much.
As it was.
Okay. Well, this is an exciting agenda item. So we have a resolution to approve a memorandum of, I guess, an MOA with the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation for STEM, Lab Housing and Community Development Director Mir Boda, Community Relations Manager Rachel Manning.
I don't know if Rachel's there or not, but I think I got this one. I think as we started with the ordinance number 2833, where we were moving some money around to finish the third floor of the Truitt Street Community Center, right, in anticipation of the STEM lab. So, she applied for this, we got it, actually, it's two STEM labs, it's an elementary school STEM lab, and a middle school age STEM lab. So, in your package, we included some information about the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation. They're working on this all over the country, and they're even going into school districts around the country with these labs. So, we think this is a perfect fit for a community center. This will, we actually have one 3D printer currently at Truitt Street, but it's fairly limited, but this will give us two more, some Chromebooks, and a lot of furniture, and some other items that go along with that package. So, this is very exciting, and we think this is gonna add to what we're already doing at Truitt. In addition, the Boys and Girls Club, which kind of turned us on to the grant and the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation, once the Truitt Street Community Center is done, they will be installing the same set within their programming at Truitt Street. So, we're actually, the city's gonna actually have two STEM labs installed, so, we're really, really excited about this.
I am too. Any other questions or comments about this?
I think this is fantastic, we had the robotics team, the local robotics team, middle schoolers, come to the council meeting, I think it was it last year, when they won the championship, I think, I think they would really love to be able to take a look at this place, once it gets all set up, I think we should probably invite them to come, come visit, because I think this is gonna be amazing for all, all the kids, to give them exposure and stuff that they may not have at home. I mean, I'm looking at some of the equipment that they're providing, and this is just fantastic stuff. This is, this is, this is my jam right here, I love this sort of thing, so, I think this is great.
Very grateful. And thanks, Rachel.
I will let her know.
Do we have consensus to move this forward? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And we are going to move on to public comments. As a reminder, you have three minutes, and the comments are, must be related to the agenda items. So, it looks like first up is Trish, in regard, you have your recovery homes.
I'm gonna pass, Amy.
Okay. Lisa Gingrich?
Yes.
It's hard to, okay. You wanna talk about a zoning item, to comment, as a resident of Newtown, with high number of such places? A resident of Newtown regarding to what? It just says with high number of such places.
To the recovery houses, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Just sit here and talk?
No, you can go up to the podium.
Yeah, my comments are just questions, I guess? So, it seems like the state trumps local laws, analyze of this type of thing, which is good clarity. And I'm wondering if the city is going to have any input as far as density or occupancy of these houses, 'cause I am a resident, or a homeowner up in Newtown, and that's a concern, 'cause we have, I think, at least six, if not more, of the, of different types of places like this in the neighborhood, and in speaking with some people that have been interested in moving into the neighborhood, that's been a concern that they've had. For the most part, these places do not cause problems, but have been problems, but we go to management and we get it dealt with, but it does change the nature of the neighborhood from regular residents to residents of these, excuse me, various definitions of homes. So, again, density, occupancy, number of them, is there any kind of thing that's gonna be done, as far as, okay, X number of houses in such and such a square miles, that you can, you can't have more than X number of this type of house, is that ever gonna be discussed, or how could we get that discussed? And also getting neighborhood input when they are being proposed, so that we're not finding out after the fact, oh, there's gonna be another one here, there's gonna be another one there. So, those are our concerns as a neighborhood, and that goes back a number of years. And on my form, I put down about the zoning concerns, 'cause I didn't know what else was coming with these other things, and if I could, I'd like to make a comment on the item for Lot 16 and Lot 3, since I didn't put it on the form, is that something I can make a comment on?
Yes.
Okay. So, Andy said that design is not locked in, is that something that's true, that design is not locked in on them? Because I've shown the pictures of the proposed units to people, and they've been appalled, because us regular people have to follow the rules for historic districts, that type of thing, and the development that is proposed, the design, doesn't, doesn't even come close to that.
Is time up?
So, what, was that, was that my time up?
Perfect.
Okay. So, that's a concern that we have, I've shown the pictures to some friends who don't live in town, to get their reactions, and some of the, I don't know that you want me to say what their reactions were, but they were not positive, as far as the design fitting into a downtown area, and I look at Easton, I look at Cambridge, I look at St. Michael's, they have very vital downtown areas, they have, you know, towns that are, seem to be succeeding quite well.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Gingrich.
Thank you. Jeff Dean, regarding recovery housing, importance of defining occupancy, the limits, types of zones, and types of dwellings.
Jeff Dean, resident of Salisbury. There's a couple of things I would like to highlight, as my understanding of the ADA accommodations increases, I appreciated the presentation tonight. I would ask that, as we move forward, we continue to recognize the difference between the standards of the ADA guidelines, and the standards of a separate, but related topic of occupancy limits, as defined by city ordinance. Those should and can be two separate considerations, the accommodation, as I understand it, would be an accommodation of something. So, that of something, to my understanding, would be determined by city ordinance, or some kind of city calculation, to determine the maximum occupancy of a certain type of dwelling, which would vary depending on what type of dwelling that would be. But if a proprietor or petitioner wanted to accommodate some over occupancy of that, it would be in relation to an occupancy limit. The, another thing I would like to highlight is that some occupancy limits cannot be exceeded for anything. Those would be fire, safety, safety and health, basically, right? So, if we had, and my analogy that I would like to use is if we had a boat, and that boat had space for 20 people, because we had 20 life jackets, we would not accommodate more than 20 people's worth of occupancy on that boat, regardless of what type of disability need somebody had. You only have so much safety occupancy in places. And then the last thing is, I would like the people, like the leadership, to remember the difference between treatment outcomes and ADA accommodations, that the, the best treatment outcome for any given type of service, no matter what type of service is being rendered by a group home, or a service, is not what the ADA accommodation is considering. So, the best outcome for a treatment might be 20 people in a situation, or 40 people in a living situation, or whatever. And I'm not arguing that, the thing I am asking everybody to remember is that if that is the case...
Your time is up.
That was 30 seconds.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
So...
Count 10 seconds.
How much time do I have?
30.
If you're saying 30, they're saying one minute.
I'm sorry, it was 30, I thought it was a one-minute time.
Okay, so, so, my last, this is my last lot. So, what I'm asking is to remember that the difference between the best possible treatment outcome, and the ADA accommodation are two separate issues, and that if the best possible treatment outcome exceeds the occupancy limit of a dwelling, all that means is that that dwelling is not suitable for the best, the best treatment outcome, but it does not mean it has to be accommodated into that house, if the accommodation exceeds the maximum limit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean.
Thank you. I just wanna make sure that Marie Foreman is, has left, or?
Everybody's around, Mr. Kennedy, morning.
Okay. Mr. Taylor, Sewer and Water, I'm trying to read something about lots, I know about the lots.
Annexation fees and the sale of lots.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, Robert Taylor, Salisbury resident, I'll skip rank and serial number. Three things that I think should have been taken off the agenda tonight, and I sent you an email about it yesterday, sewer and water is one of them, annexation fees is another, and the sale of lots is the third. These are all matters that should be left for the next council, whoever that go forward at the next regular meeting, particularly the sale of the lots. I just hope we have a clean sweep election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, I also need you to sign and date this too, for the record. Thank you.
Bring it back, so.
We have one more. Michael Peronski?
Thank you.
Okay, and you wanna talk about the North Prong update?
Yep.
Thank you, I just wanted to, Mr. Baldwin left, but I was gonna invite him to our next Parks Committee meeting, so that he could give the members of the committee an update on the North Prong Park. This is the first we've heard about it, really, in five years, so, I think it would be great for the committee to receive an update. Also, I just wanted to ask what, what the city's plan is, really, to center equity in both the design and decision-making process around the park. I read through some of the design ideas that were completed years ago, and the responses really didn't reflect, they just, they didn't seem to reflect the community. Most of the respondents said they planned to drive to the park, they wanted to participate in like boating and kayaking activities, and that may have been true then, or may have been true among the respondents, but there really wasn't any information available in that document that was on the city's website, about who actually responded, was it, I think it said some of the information was posted in City Hall, at the Government Office Building, but, and I do, I do remember a workshop to kind of give a, present the design ideas, but these were student-generated ideas, and really, frankly, I think new parks should be community-generated ideas, and should incorporate, you know, the wants, needs, and desires of the people that are in the community, that would be, that would have direct access to the park, but also those of us who would wanna go visit. And moreover, I think this park really does accomplish a lot of environmental justice goals, and I just wanna make sure that, in doing so, we also address some of the goals of the people that live in that community, rather than just kind of implementing an idea that was put forth by a student five years ago. So, I think we got a lot of work to do there, I really do appreciate seeing the commitment on the city's side to investing in parks. I hope that commitment continues, and I think it's a great opportunity for us, and I think we should take full advantage of this opportunity, and really engage our citizens, and gain buy-in for those investments, so. But, that's it, thanks.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. Okay, that's the end of the public comments that I have, are we done? For sure, for sure, okay. Okay, so now I'm gonna move to mayor comments, Mr. Heath.
Yes, thank you. Just two comments tonight, one, remind, this is third Friday coming up, and we hope to see you down there, and as always, if you're able to give blood, please do so, we are still extremely low. Thank you. Mr. Kitts, do we have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things real quick, to address the last speaker, Mike, as the chair of our Parks and Rec Committee, you are definitely, you and your team will be, stakeholder group will be involved in any of our parks decisions moving forward, so, absolutely, that was a great exercise with students, but before we get too far down the tracks, we need to engage with the community, and our stakeholder group, Parks and Rec Committee, to walk through the needs of that community, and what the goals are for that park. Second, as everyone can tell, there's several of us in a hotel, we're at Maryland Municipal League, our MML Fall Conference. What's exciting about some of the topics that are on this agenda, and previous agendas recently, are exactly what we were talking about here at a statewide level, the housing crisis that is plaguing the state of Maryland, looking at us working on redevelopment and affordable housing opportunities, is exactly what everybody is talking about, and then we also had a great, I was part of a great presentation on Vision Zero, and talking about bike lanes and infrastructure to keep pedestrians and cyclists safe, so that was a great presentation. So, we're right in the thick of it, with what we are talking about at a local level, it is concerns of the state and nationally, that's where the funding's going, that's where the priorities are going with this governor, so excited to know that we are a trailblazer as a community, and working through some of the toughest challenges facing our residents. South River River, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Ms. Jackson, hello.
Hey.
Would you like, you have any comments, would you like to share?
Yeah, I do, um, students, and Italian teachers, and librarians who are helping us with this program, so if you have any children that are wanting to come, if you want your children to come and be tutored, please feel free to bring your kids to 821 West Main Street, from 5:00 to 7:00, it's only on Mondays and Tuesdays, but your children are welcome, we give them snacks, and then on Tuesdays, we give them a meal. So, just make sure you bring them, you know, we're just trying to get these kids that are struggling with some other studies, we want them to be up, their GPA to be up to a 3.25, and up from that to a 4.05, a 4.0 on grade point average, and we want this for all the kids, we don't want our kids to be left in the communities, grow up and not be very well educated. So, my goal is, and our goal, it's not my goal, our goal is to get them where they need to be. I thank you so much, and just remember, it's the next week, week after next, it's the Trunk and Tree, October the 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00, at the VFW Post 10159, so please come out, we've got some surprises for you, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Gregory, any comments?
For some reason, it was not, it was not on meeting format, that's fair. So, I just wanna remind everybody that tomorrow's the deadline to register to vote, we have an election coming up, if you have not checked on your voter registration, make sure it's still accurate, you can go to vote.org, and do whatever you need from there, you can update an address if you've moved, if you're not registered, you can register, it's a great, very useful, very easy-to-use site, because if I were to read out the Maryland State site, it would take probably 20 minutes. But, I really encourage everybody to go out there and make sure that they're checking their voter registration, make sure it's up to date, tomorrow is the deadline, so, it's very important you do that in the next day.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Dowdy, any comments?
Yes, good afternoon, so like Andy and April said, we are here at MML, and I'm honored to be representing Salisbury, even though it is my third meeting, I do miss you all, and miss being at the office, but it is great to meet with different municipal colleagues, and share different ideas, and see what works, and what has not been in collaborating those ideas, so, having a good time here, and definitely networking. I'm excited, and also, so for the gentleman who, you know, and of course, thank you all for your public comments, and thank you for sharing those ideas and concerns, the gentleman that spoke last, I'm gonna say thank you for emphasizing that need to, for us to definitely have that community involvement, that's something that I strongly believe in, so, you mentioned that, of course, it's just hanging something on City Hall, it's up to us, as city representatives, to meet people and ask them their questions, so that's something that I believe strongly in, and you have that commitment from me, so, thank you for emphasizing that as well, and, you know, please reach out if you have any ideas or anything to further that along. Um, I'm excited to, uh, of course, I know we talked about Newton Street Community Center, uh, but also Truitt Street, for some things coming in the future, and I'm excited to be having some conversations on revitalizing that, um, here this week, and, and seeing if we can make sure that we, uh, involve some more students and, and definitely make that more of a, uh, an integral part of District Two, so I'm excited to, to bring forth that and make sure that we emphasize the need for protecting our youth and having a safe space for them. A couple of events this week, of course, the third Friday, like, um, our wonderful mayor, uh, mentioned, uh, from five to eight superheroes, um, I may or may not be dressing up, uh, we have this Saturday, Halloween...